So I just signed up the reply, joined us too.
Yeah, I didn't know what the training, yeah, it's like continuing. And everybody pays for their own?
Pretty much.
Go ahead, go.
No, you heard the backup on the speaker, I just had to shut it off for you.
Well, now that you're thinking about it, I won't start asking if that's. Nice, it's not a, most of the time I'm in stuff, so. Last year, it was only, everybody had to do a class, so.
Yeah, how much?
I don't remember, I put on my. That was neat, I wasn't doing driving down the road.
Hi, do you want an agenda? Okay. Want you to be informed.
Turn your microphones on.
Okay. Yeah, we'll share one. We do. Church bells are ringing. Let's start. I am going to call to order this town of Griswold Board of Selectmen regular meeting. The Griswold Town Hall downstairs meeting room on February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, six P M. Call to order roll call Tina Falk for selectmen to my right is Martin McKinney, selectman. To my left, Rich Grabowski, selectman, and to his left, Lisa Wood, executive secretary. Item number two, pledge of allegiance. Okay, moving on to item number three. Approval of meeting minutes, we have February eleventh special meeting, February eleventh regular meeting. February twelfth special meeting, February twelfth special meeting, February thirteenth special meeting. And February seventeenth special meeting minutes.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve A to F, as you, as you designated before.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Meeting minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number four correspondence, in your packet, you have a letter from Philip Belial. His letter of resignation from the Griswold Water Pollution Control Authority.
We, I regretfully resent his resignation.
I'll second, we don't need to say that, we don't mind, just accept.
Yeah, many years of service.
Thank you.
Your commission, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, five, number five, old business. No old business. Moving on to item number six, new business. Discussion impossible action on ten tax refunds for a total of five thousand seven hundred and forty five dollars and seventy four cents. As presented by Leona Sharkey, tax collector.
I'll make the motion that we approve the ten tax refunds. Totally five thousand seven hundred and forty five dollars and seventy four cents, as presented by our tax collector.
I second that motion.
And we have a motion and a second. On the ten tax refunds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six B, discussion impossible action on social media issues. I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Okay, move on to item six C. Discussion impossible action on discussion with Jewett City Little League. And we do have some board members here. Okay, there have been ongoing conversations for quite some time about. Repairs upkeep. For the Little League fields and then we were at a borough meeting last month where. There was a gentleman who presented the need to, I think it was the T-ball field. And we just wanted to talk about, because we've never really sat down as a group, and especially with the board. To see what your thoughts are, what, what you'd like the board to know, what you feel your needs are.
So I, I did prepare a statement.
When you speak, could you please state your name and address for the background?
Name and address.
Okay, so. Brian Evans.
Yes.
I'm actually a Lisbon resident, a property owner in.
That's okay.
One twenty-three Strawberry Street in Lisbon.
Okay.
I did prepare a, a statement to read.
Yes.
To kind of start the conversation. The Jewish City Little League is run completely by volunteers. In spring of twenty twenty four, we had a successful season with approximately three hundred fifty registrations. There's a tremendous amount of work done by the volunteers, as in most, most youth sports. Volunteers do the following, they handle registrations, they purchase uniforms. They get sponsorships, they do fundraising, they purchase supplies and equipment. They maintain equipment, they run a concession stand, they find umpires, they schedule games. They schedule practices, they find coaches, they train and educate the coaches. They set up picture days. They set up opening day events. They work with the Little League organization. They work with accommodating the special needs of some of the athletes. They perform background checks on the coaches and, and the other volunteers. They pay bills, they track finances, they handle insurance and handle communications. You may take note that this list does not involve anything to do with the actual sport itself. Practices still need to be held, the kids have to be coached and taught the game, the games have to be managed. Coaches have to communicate with the parents, the coaches have to communicate issues to the board. And work with other coaches in other towns and board members as weather and others scheduling issues may arise. You may note that nothing on this list has involved the Jewish City Little League facility. Every spring, the fields must be cleaned of garbage, leaves, branches, and other debris that have settled in over the course of the winter. The concession stand must be prepared for the new season, the bleachers have to be repaired and repainted. The dugouts need to be cleaned, repaired and painted. Work needs to be done to the aging fieldhouse. Speed bumps have to be reinstalled each spring, fences and gates have to be inspected and repaired. The fields should be fertilized, aerated, batched and overseeded, although this does not happen. During the season, the facility needs to be cleaned daily, checked for hazards. Needles, glass bottles, bees' nests, potholes, ruts in the fields. The fields need to be mowed and trimmed, prior to games, the infield needs to be raked, the bases need to be installed, the lines need to be done. After the games, bases need to be put away. The field needs to be reraked and the garbage needs to be emptied, sometimes multiple times during the day, especially on the weekend. Even after the season is over, the volunteers are still charged with emptying the garbage at the facility. Emptying the garbage is a difficult task as the garbage cans are open, oftentimes are overfilled with heavy items. Dog poop, diapers, discarded food, and whatever precipitation has fallen in that period of time. Volunteers do all these jobs. Please note that most of our vol, our core group of volunteers are also volunteers for other sports. The baseball season literally begins the same weekend that the basketball season ends. The All-Star baseball season ended a week or two before the football season started. The basketball season started the day after our football season ended this year. Being involved with youth sports is a year-round commitment for many of us, albeit rewarding. This core group of volunteers has maxed out, yet has remained wildly successful. District eleven champions for minors baseball, a very successful campaign for the girls softball and sectionals. Two Super Bowl titles for the micros and juniors in Griswold youth football. In fact, out of all Griswold youth football at all levels, the teams only had three losses this season. The Jewish City Little League is also saddled with staggering utility costs. Utility costs for the facility are in excess of eight thousand dollars per year and are likely to increase this year. Spring registrations gross thirty one thousand dollars, meaning roughly twenty five percent of the registration costs. Go to our local utility companies. Without delving into the details of all of our finances, with each passing year, there is just enough money to do the bare minimum. To maintain the facility and make it safer for our athletes. We strive to keep our registrations, registration prices in line with the surrounding towns. It is imperative to keep the sport accessible to all. As there are roughly ten families per year that are already unable to pay the registration fees. And we, we cover them. We lack the funding to take care of the larger projects that need to be addressed. We have done our due diligence prior to this meeting and have a good handle on what other towns in Eastern Connecticut are doing for their little leagues and the facilities at which they play. No two, two, no two towns have the same agreement, but it's clear that all share in their responsibilities in a far more equitable way than we do here. Our facility is located in the center of the, of, of the Jewish City Borough and it's, is accessible year round, twenty-four hours per day. It is seamlessly adjacent to the Veterans Memorial Park. The facility is used year round as it boasts the area's only playground, a large parking lot and a skate park. I would encourage everyone to visit maybe the Preston Community Park. It is a beautiful, well-maintained park by Preston. Our park has a potential, we just need to make the necessary investments of time and money to elevate the facility to what it should be. And more importantly, something we can all be proud of. Through the evolution, evolution of Little League in Eastern Connecticut, we're no longer just playing in-house games. More than ever, our league is constantly hosting teams for, from our, our neighboring towns. In fact, with the success of our teams, we have had the privilege to host All-Star Baseball and Softball tournaments that bring in teams from even further away. We are proud of our league and our athletes and don't wish to have that tarnished by an under-maintained park. People from all over are gathering here to spend a large chunk of time watching baseball. What is the impression that we are leaving of Griswold and Jewish City on these folks? We feel that with the additional support from the town. We could rebalance our, our budget to allocate funds to improving the program. We could also reallocate our volunteer resources to completing projects that will also improve the facility and program. I think we all have a vision for what this park can be, we all just need to come together, develop a plan and execute. This cannot continue to be the hot potato topic of the town. With that said, our Little League requests every reset of our relationship with the town and the borough. In which we can put all past differences aside and move forward in partnership. For what is best for the town, the Little League, and most importantly, the children. We respectfully ask the board members and town officials here tonight. What they feel are their responsibilities to the maintenance and development of this facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion?
Well, I'm kind of shocked at the eight thousand dollars. The, the, the utilities charging you for, for power, that's the first thing I'll say.
That's water as well, and we put the utilities together. But the, the electric is.
And that's paid by the league?
Yes.
And.
Josh Howard, one seven nine, Wakeham Drive. It's difficult to have night games there, we have a beautiful facility. People can park in, in the outfield and be able to watch the games, it's an amazing thing to watch night games there. It really happened because it bankrupts the league. Because every time we turn on those lights, it's money coming right out of the bank account, three, four, five hundred dollars a night just to run. Run electricity down there.
And, and if, and if you can imagine this, this is actually a rate that was negotiated down in the last two years.
So it was more?
It was more, correct.
Well, I know they're not very efficient lighting either, they're, they're not talking. New LEDs or anything like that, they're, oh, high pressure soliums.
So I, I, I don't have the, the, all the details involving this, but Eversource. Does offer grants and everything to be able to upgrade the lighting to LED lighting, which would save a tremendous amount of money.
Well, Jewish City is not, not, not an ever source.
Bingo, so we don't have that luxury. So, you know, the utility can't help us out with the grant, but they can certainly take the thousands of dollars a year.
So I think. We've got a little bit of homework to do.
Sure.
Based on. Can you email that statement to me? You have my email address, obviously, we've communicated before.
Yeah, I can send this to you.
Okay, yeah, send it to me.
And one of the other things that, that you have to realize, we don't have a public, we don't have a rec department per se. So any work that we do at your facility or the soccer facility. Or basically any other facility, whether it's a playground, it's through Public Works, the employees that we, at Public Works. Also, in the summertime, they do the graves, all the, all the millions of cemetery's we have in town. So, you know, so, I think some of this is you're stuck in, in a personnel issue, not an issue, but a person. How, you know, it's, it's, you, you, the league has always done. Most of the work down there except for the mowing and, and, and the, the stuff on the fields on a yearly basis, you know, a yearly basis. But I'd say things can't change, there's nothing, but I am shocked that the. Of, of that, that amount of money goes back to the utilities, to be honest with you.
Yeah, that was the biggest.
The camera and some, some of this other stuff you're talking about too.
What I think long term, what we're looking for is a partnership with you guys to figure out what is Public Works responsibility, what's our responsibility? And then maybe for the bigger projects that we have to improve the facilities down there, we have a joint effort between both parties. You know, to do some of those things, but if we can save money on utilities, it's more money that we're putting right back in the facility.
Well, I can't tell for the facility, but we, we can't talk for the utilities, but it's certainly a big number.
Yeah, we can't, we can't certainly here, speak for them here and now, but yeah, that was a surprise to me too. Okay.
We, we do hope that with your support, maybe we can work with utilities to improve that.
We, we understand what you're asking.
And then everything else.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we need a, a partnership that. Where we have, we can delegate the responsibilities and the activities that need to happen there for year round. What it is, is it's a public park in the middle of town. Stuff like the garbages. How, how is it a group of volunteers responsibly to empty garbages on, on this side of a imaginary line? But then over the, on the other side, it's, it's a, an, an activity by, it's done by another group.
Well.
And furthermore, there just needs to be a, a, a five-year plan.
Right, well, that's my concern, my concern, we're in the middle of a budget process right now. So, so, and everybody knows that, well, you're in Lisbon, we are, we are, so, you know. This would have been a nice conversation to have. Three months ago, four months ago before. So.
Um, I will say that I do know Public Works, you mow there weekly? Every week to ten days. Okay. We don't have the luxury of a large. And I'm not making excuses for anybody. But we do not have the luxury of a well-staffed Public Works Department. And I mean, you, you can see that when we have storm coverage and, and all of that. So I do know that they do the best they can and you go out, as you said, Todd, he's our director of Public Works. Every week to ten days. So, we're gonna have a conversation. Okay, and. We'll see if we can find some common ground and, and some support. I'd like to talk further too, not necessarily tonight, but after we have our conversation. But I know at the beginning of the season, and, and I, this was many, many, many years ago. Especially like before opening day. It was all of the parents and the volunteers, you know, we went out and we, we did a lot of sprucing up. And I, I think that you had commented on the same thing.
We're all veterans of Little League.
Of Little League, many years in.
I was a former president, but anyway, if, as part of the communication, if you can be. Give us some idea what it is that you, you're looking from us as far as dollars and cents or particular. Services of some kind, if we can define that a little bit, then it may be easier for us to, uh, address. If we have an idea of what it is exactly you're looking for.
Well, it, it's a, it's a combination of, of manpower and help. And, you know, maybe some relief somewhere on the, on the utility bills. I know you guys don't own the utility, but.
Yeah.
You guys probably have some pull with the utility, so. We can.
And then like you guys know, there's less and less people who want to volunteer, it's the same people who go down there four weekends in a row.
Oh, I know.
Families on, go clean up and pick up day.
And it's also too, keep in mind that in our school system. The, the students are required a certain number of community hours.
And, and Trish does.
Before graduation.
With the, the people at the school that help the students find.
Good, good. Yep, and we do have sitting in the, in the rear. Our borough warden and she's, she's listening intently on, you know, the utility thing, so. We will have a.
If, if, if I can speak to that, there have been several projects. That when you speak of, of an ever-source grant, you're absolutely correct, you know, Jewish City. DPU doesn't have those kinds of grants available, but they have had retrofitting for LED. They, they did it with the school, you know, they did it with other. Uh, uh, other kind of public, you know, entities. Let me speak with them and see if there's a possibility to retrofit those lights to LED.
Okay, thank you.
I can speak to them, I mean.
And that, that's Lori Soder, she's the borough warden, so. Okay.
I think it's open conversations like this where stuff like that could potentially happen. You know, so I love open communication, you and us, whether it's at meetings like this or not in meetings like this, one on one. You know?
Agreed.
Be great.
Agreed.
I think we all know.
Only thing we're doing is improving the facility and making our kids sit.
Understood.
Yeah, and, you know, to speak to having like maybe a five-year plan, we, we know there's budgets and. We know we all do so much at, at one time, but having a plan. To, to move forward and attack these projects over the course of five years, at least we know that we're all working towards something. And we can demonstrate the improvements to the people that are part of the league.
Okay.
And the town.
Okay. Any other comment, question? Okay, so I don't think we need a motion on anything, just to say that, you know, send me the information. Laurie will check on the ever-source opportunities and.
Now, if there is a grant that you do know from, truly from ever-source that will do lighting. It would be nice so we could try to parallel that, if you could get us that information, so we have some ammunition. To go back to them to maybe do a parallel, you know, ever-source offers this, it's, it's easier for us to. Compare stuff if you had something, if there is something, you could find something like that.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question? You're saying your utilities are eight thousand dollars, what were they before? Do you know?
Gary Ackley, point one, Sam Chek and Row. I, I, we're, the, between the three of us, we're new, somewhat new to the board, so I don't know that we have that.
We'll find out though.
Please do.
Please tell them.
Yes. Okay, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Okay, six D, discussion impossible action on request from Friends of Patchog Forest.
Chairman Viadella, two seventeen, my story. Uh, every year we come to the town because of the NIP money. And we know the town gets so much money a year, I'm not sure if you're still getting it, they still doing that? The NIP money through the state?
I think so.
As far as, as far as we know.
Changing on the state every day, but yes.
Friends of Patchog was reaching on then for, see if we could get five hundred dollars. A donation for, so we can get our rippers and bags and vests and stuff like that.
Okay.
That's what I have for the NIP part of it.
Okay.
Do you want me to go right into E?
Yeah, please do, go into six E, discussion impossible action on community cleanup day.
Why don't you start at the Little League field?
Friends of Patchog, every year, we, we actually start in January, but because of the snow on the ground, we haven't been able to pick up any. Stuff on sides of the roads and stuff, but Friends of Patchog, our members do roughly around twenty-five miles of road in Griswold. Some of it's the state roads, two oh one, stuff like that, but we still do twenty-five miles, we average about three hundred bags of trash from January to. The end of April, every year for the town.
Yeah.
Town is very willing to, to trash on Wednesdays, we usually go on on Wednesday and pick up the trash. And we break, just a couple hours, our group is slowly growing, we're slowly getting more volunteers that are doing it throughout the whole year. I just met up with two more people in Banjo Sullivan and Brugge, this past year and stuff. So, we're planning on April twenty-sixth, meeting at the Hopeville Pavilion. I believe it's seven to two. We'll have the coffee and donuts and we'll have some type of lunch and stuff at the Hopeville Pavilion. And we could always use volunteers if anybody wants to show up and hand out bags or whatever to people and stuff like that. But that's what Friends of Patchog does every year, we're always out there. Picking up our roads and whatever we need to do.
Okay.
Okay, I was all gonna add.
No, but I will, I, I'll add a few things, the whole thing was, this started with Earth Day. And I worked on this with Ed Burdick, Ed Burdick is no longer here and I've continued to work on it every year. So what we encourage people to do, whether it's groups, youth groups or. Any type of group, the school groups, I'm gonna talk with them about it on Thursday morning, church groups, anything at all. To volunteer to adopt a road, we supply the gloves, we supply the bags. Borough streets, parking lots, parks, ballparks, anything like that. We have a, a economic group who takes care of the service roads over by Ocean State Job Lot. Anything or your own personal, the, the road that you live on. And those roads are coordinated, I, I will be posting my phone number so that people can say, we're going to adopt Cook Hill Road. So, that'll be coming up, and the other thing is. We're looking for volunteers and Dave, you know this, and we're looking for volunteers with trucks and or trailers. Because what we do is we put the opportunity out there for people who are homebound. Who cannot get to, bulky waste will be open that day, it will be free. And people who are homebound can call me or anybody and we will coordinate a pickup. And we encourage people to clean up the, any debris in their yards, trash, old patio furniture, umbrellas. Clearing off their decks, it's just sprucing up the town. Todd, do you remember how many tons, tons we were able to collect last year?
I think it was about twelve tons, plus the steel, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a very successful. Yeah, it's 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 a very successful day, so you're going to see a lot of promotion for that particular event, so. All right.
And if anybody wants to pick up trash on the roadside during the week, whenever. Between January, April, they can always contact me, I'll come pick the bags up and take them to the dump. Give everything, we ask people to pick them up, put them on one side of the road. Where you're at so you're not carrying them, because a lot of times people will volunteer because they don't know how to get rid of the trash. So.
Yeah, no, we we do have pickups, we've gone around and we've picked them up after the event. You know, somebody will say, we have 12 bags over at Ocean State last year and we went to pick them up that night, so. Okay.
So with my NIP money, do we have any else?
Yeah, we need to make.
Want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the amount of $500 from NIP money to be used for the cleanup. On 4/26.
My second motion.
Hey, we have a motion to appropriate $500. From the NIP fund. To Friends of Patchogue Forest. For items needed for roadside cleanup. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your efforts, by the way.
Hopefully I got the voice of the Little League signed up though too.
Aren't you glad you came this evening? Okay. Six F, discussion and possible action on scope of the ordinance committee. And I thought that this, and Wayne, are you here for the ordinance committee?
So, Dave and Jim are here.
Okay, yep, I'm sorry. But um, there had been some discussion and I'm going to let Rich take this. Um, there was some discussion and some angst over. The process of the ordinance committee. And what their charge was, what they have been doing, and you do. This group puts a lot of work and effort into. The ordinance review and um. A memo came through to, an email came through to me and it was from members of the committee. Rich had a situation where he was working on a, it was a critical.
What are we talking about, the government?
The government thing, he had a critical meeting, he had to have an answer quickly, so he contacted. The town's attorney for for an opinion. Now, understand. Any ordinance that is created or changed. Has to come through the Board of Selectmen and it's not just us being power mongers. It has to come back to the Board of Selectmen and it will always go before town's attorney for final approval. That's not to be an insult to anybody on the on the ordinance committee. That's the process, the ordinance committee does not have that type of authority. Okay? And Rich, I don't know, you had something you wanted to say.
Well, I mean, this has been, we've been going back and forth with this for a little while. And I went back and I got the minutes of the October 13th, 2015. Board of Selectmen's regular minutes. And the motion that was made is to create a five-member committee comprised of two elected officials. Two residents and one in-house staff member. Quote, "To review and recommend changes and additions to the code of ordinances for a one-year term." Now, this, that was nine years ago. And I believe, at least my interpretation of it is that. The charge was to deal with the current, the the code of ordinance as it stood on that day. To review and recommend changes to those said codes. It does not say anything about the ordinance committee needs to approve new ordinances. There's nothing in there about. And we've had this discussion a number of times and I don't know how to make it any more clearer. That the committee was formed from the Board of Selectmen to review the existing codes. And that's it, that was their charge. As far as new, that's our responsibility. And my contact with the, as as chairman of the Government Study Group. We had some discussions and I asked the town attorney to draft up a draft of a potential. Change so that we could review it as a committee. We have not had any discussion as far as time-wise, wanting to bring it to the community. We have several options, that was one of them. So we're still in review process. And me, I personally, uh, I don't feel I need to go to the ordinance committee for anything. Because the ordinance committee works for us, we don't work for them, I don't need your approval. And it's clear here in the in the minutes of the 2015, it says, your only charge is to review the existing. Code of ordinances, nothing more. And hopefully we can come to an understanding and appreciate each other's efforts and and try to work together. But I'm, I'm not going to have this back and forth anymore. As a member of the ordinance committee, can I comment?
Please do.
That's the way, debut 59 Lea Avenue. That's the way we have always understood it, we were supposed to be reviewing. But over the last few years. We've been being tasked. By the Board of Selectmen, not truck predecessors to you folks, to write new ordinances.
Such as?
Noise ordinance, light ordinance, alarm ordinance.
Does it happen?
We wrote them up, sent them back up to the the Board of Selectmen and. We don't know where they went from there, but we've been continually tasked to write new ordinance. One of the latest is the rental inspection ordinance. There's, there was voice that asked kind of go to ordinance committee.
I think my request, we wanted to see what other towns had, not to create a rental ordinance. We wanted to see what other towns are doing because we want to come up with a housing code. So it really was, could you do a little research and see what. Surrounding towns are doing. It wasn't to come up with a new ordinance. Because we don't even know what a new ordinance. What was that? Oh, wow, okay, there you go, public works. So, yeah, it wasn't to create a new ordinance, it was just basically, could somebody, you know, make a few phone calls and see. What are the other towns' housing codes look like? So, or ordinances, so. But I think. I think we can come together and. You know, Wayne, do you have anything that you want to add?
Yeah, Wayne Malle, MP Quattro. So I did some research along with other towns with yours. Is supposed to do, I've only been the ordinance committee for a little over a year now. So I agree with what you're saying, we're supposed to review the code, actually Jim and I are doing that now. And uh. I don't think we've ever thought that we had control before this approval, it's always been the process of. If we're asked to write one, we write it, present it to you, you guys review it, and if you agree with it, then it has to go in front of the town public. Hearing for approval, correct?
Yeah.
So I don't think, oh, I think the only thing that we were asking about, because we found out about. Your request for the ordinance, with the lawyer, we were just wondering, if, basically, we're just asking if you need any help with it. That's all, we're not taking any power and we have no power with the ordinance except to review. And maybe write one if you request it or work with you wanted to as a team, not here to impede, we're here to help.
So I would say that yes, if if there is a request from the Board of Selectmen to, you know, come up with a draft. That's at the, that's at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen. But I do have one question. How did the burn ordinance come about? Because I don't think this board requested it. Who requested that?
Really just a discussion right now, that that was based on what we saw this last summer. With the no burn order came from the governor. And then some of the fire departments saw some people burning out there and what would be the process of. Providing warnings or how to enforce people from not burning.
But that's, that's kind of what we're getting to, it it was, I I knew that it was on your agenda and it was like, well, where did a burn ordinance come from? We didn't, we didn't request it. So those are the types of things that I think that we all need to work on.
Yeah, we can have those discussed.
Yeah, absolutely.
Debut 59 Lea, when the burn ordinance first was on the agenda. We brought, I brought forward and I believe Jim Barney also did, that the state already has burn ordinances. When individual wasn't happy with that, he wanted to write a new one. So we we tried to shut it down because we didn't need to, it wouldn't exist with the state. And it's.
All right.
Very frustrating for us.
Well. It's February 25th, tomorrow's a new day and I think that. We all understand each other now, or at least we have a better understanding of each other and how we can move forward on this. Okay? Any other comments, questions from either of you?
I think I thought I had some comments and questions earlier today.
Okay. All right. Okay, we'll move on, no, uh. Discussion and possible action, I think that. We understand the conversation. Six G, discussion and possible action on reappointment. Of Catherine Peterson as a regular member of the Ethics Ethics Commission. For a term of 3/6/25 through 3/5/28.
I'll make the motion and that's to reappoint Catherine Peterson. As a regular member of the Ethics Commission for the term of 3/6/25 through 3/5/28. I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion made and a second. On Kathy Peterson's reappointment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are moving on to. Number seven, any other business that may properly come before the board and I have. A few things, so. I would. Like to make a motion. To add on to the agenda for discussion and possible action. A letter of request from um. The Chair of the Griswold Waste. The WPCA, Martin McKinney, um, on a contribution, so I'd like to make a motion to move this on to the agenda.
I'll make, I'll second that.
Okay, um, motion. You do. We have a motion and a second, so.
To add it to the agenda.
To add it to the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There was a Griswold Water Pollution Control Authority meeting this afternoon. And based on, they are just initially starting to coordinate and get together. And they presented me with a request that I'm going to read. Dear Selectmen, we met with our board today, February 25th, 2025. The Griswold Water Pollution Control Authority is requesting. $7,500 for the. Firing of an attorney to review our documents before our meeting with the State. Department of Environmental Protection. This is to protect the town of Griswold, thank you for your consideration, Martin McKinney. Griswold Water Pollution Control Authority Chair. I will say that there is a lot of work that's being done. This board is being um. I don't want to say. It's being renewed, okay, there are going to be new members. There is some information that's coming out of deep, we had a meeting the other day. There are some issues that need to be resolved between the Griswold. Authority and also with the Jewett City DPU. And I think that legal opinion is most definitely needed and I would um. I would say that yes, this 7,500 should be approved. So I'd like to make a motion, or if you'd like to make a motion, Rich.
I'll make the motion, we approve the $7,500 allocation out of the legal line item. For the purpose of supporting the Griswold Water Pollution Control Authority as it moves forward.
And we have a motion made to approve the 7,500. I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and Martin abstains. Okay, I would like to make a motion to bring on. To the agenda. Which one's this Lisa, oh, okay. Yep, there are, um, bring on to the agenda two requests to be appointed for um. A vacant EDC position. All right, for um. Discussion and possible action.
I'll make a motion that we bring us on to the agenda, the item of filling the vacancy. On the Griswold Economic Development Commission.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, you all have copies, there were two requests that came in. One, the first request that came in was from Kathy Waselik. Um, it was a letter of interest and then the second request that came in was from an E. Jeffrey Hutchinson. To fill. One vacancy for the remainder of a term of 5/10/22 through 5/9/27. Any discussion?
I think in the, in the past, we've always done it, you know, they're both very, very qualified applicants.
Yes.
And I just think in the past, we always, the first one on is, first letter we get is the first one on.
I believe that's true to be in the past.
So that's, I agree. I'm not saying, I think we make a motion that we put Kathy on.
Yeah.
She was the first letter that we got.
Yeah.
And and, so I, I would, and letting the other gentleman know. Have nothing to do with his qualifications or anything like that.
All right, so we have a motion to appoint Kathy Waselik. Um, to the EDC vacancy, remainder of the term of 5/10/22 to 5/9/27. We have a motion.
I was seconding.
Okay, we have a second motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, I'd like to make a motion, sorry folks, but there was a lot to get on here. Um, I'd like to make a motion to add on to the agenda. A, a letter from Pierce Merchant requesting appointment on to the Griswold Water Pollution Control Authority. For the remainder of 1/1/2021 through 12/31/2026.
I'm going to abstain from this also.
Okay. Can you add it on to the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we add up to the agenda, the. Filling the vacancy on the Griswold Water Pollution Control Authority.
I second the motion again on the agenda.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to add this on to the agenda. For discussion and possible action. So you all have the copy of the letter from Pierce Merchant. Requesting appointment on to the Griswold Water Pollution Control Authority. And um. He states an interest in getting involved with the town and he'd like to begin with this appointment.
Um, this, this vacancy just occurred, didn't it?
We had two, two items ago on them.
We have two.
Two items ago, or B. That gentleman let us retalk, like this week took off.
Yes.
One that was due.
Oh, yeah, just, just, just resign.
Yeah. Line four.
It was one and then we had.
So we have two vacancies?
Correct.
Yes, you have one more, yes.
Yes. Somebody like to make a motion to approve?
I made a motion, we approve. Uh, Pierce Merchant's application to go on. Griswold Water Pollution Control.
I'll second it.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. To approve Pierce Merchant for the remainder of 1/1/21 through 12/31/26. To the Griswold Water Pollution Control Authority. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just a couple more.
All right.
Okay, um, just two more. You were both given. Uh, Lisa gave you yesterday the regional revaluation contract that just came in. And we're, all right, I need to make a motion to add the regional revaluation contract on to the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Um, for discussion and possible action on the regional revaluation contract, what this is. I'm sorry?
Vote on the motion. Put it on the agenda. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Excuse me.
All right, so every five years, there's a revale and I got this information from the Finance Director. And the next revale is going to be on October 1st, 2026, and this is a contract with NICOG. To join in on a regional revaluation. With other surrounding towns, all right? He recommends going in on the. He recommends going in on the NICOG regional revale simply because he said you will certainly get a better price. The price that we will pay with the regional contract is going to be substantial savings over doing it independently.
No question, no question. But the, this is a statistical one, so it's not a hands-on one. That'll come five years after this, so. I'm all in favor of this, the regional, because it's all going to be done statistically based on the information in sales and so on and so forth, so. And it's true, I think Eric also said that we could spread the cost of this over a five-year period.
Yes.
So it makes sense in every way because of the dollar sense involved.
Just explain to me, so we do like a real big one every 10 years?
Yeah.
And like just by numbers every five?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So I am going to need your approval to sign this agreement?
I'll make a motion, we authorize the first selectman to sign the, I don't know. The regional reevaluation contract as presented.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to allow the first selectman to sign the NICOG regional revaluation contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, one more.
Come on.
I would like to make a motion to add to the agenda a discussion on the semi-quinsentennial celebration. I'll, I'll explain. This is America 250. It has to do with the 250th year of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. That is going to be happening in our country next year, 2026. And we, I know that we put this out there before, but I know the state is really pushing communities, towns, municipalities to find ways within their communities to celebrate special events, whether it be a concert, whether it be a play, something that groups can do.
On the Fourth of July that year?
It doesn't have to be, it can be throughout the year.
Excuse me, Tina?
Yes.
Can you give a second on your motion?
Oh, I second.
To add it to the agenda?
Martin seconds.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Robert's rules. I know. So we, we have Mrs. Micatell here, and I think that you can speak a little bit to it, what, what your group is doing.
I'm part of the Connecticut Cultural Coalition, and they brought this up like last year, at least, not longer. So the idea is, the town, actually, the whole country.
Yes.
Will be, should be celebrating it, and it doesn't have to be July 4th. And it can involve whatever activities the town wants to do. And the thing right now is, I know other areas, activities that they want to perform or show or display or whatever. And so I belong to a group of town folk, Eastern Connecticut Performing Arts Association. And so we've done jazz fest at the Retcho Street Farm, we've done stuff at Heavet Tree, we've done plays at the high school. For two years in a row, we've done a community chorus for Christmas and donations related to the food bank or whatever. So our organization, I'm pushing the organization to get involved to do an activity, whether it's music, whether it's a play, some kind of performance or whatever. So we're in the, in the, what is the town doing and how can we fit into that? And so I, I didn't have.
No, we're not.
It wasn't on my radar.
So back with the prior administration, there was a request put out to several. It was the Historical Society, the Superintendent of Schools, and the Borough Warden. They want to form a semi-quinsentennial committee. And that hasn't happened. So I'd like to put the request out that we need community members to form a committee to help plan and organize this. And it's certainly with the help of the Board of Selectmen and many other people. But we need some volunteers to come forward to form this committee and at least get it off the ground and running. There are so many things that we, that we can do as a town, yes?
I have a question. I, like many, many people, I don't get the newspaper anymore, and I don't do Facebook. And I'm curious, how do you communicate with your community to get that information out? What is it that, that you have to get the word out to people like me? I don't want to be involved in the community, but I just don't see this stuff until it's gone by.
Well, Lisa would post.
On the website.
On the website, on the Griswold website. I would have the senior center posted on their information. Lori Soder puts it out to the borough. And I think a lot of it is word of mouth. And sending out individual invitations, say, for example, going back to the Historical Society and requesting once again, you know, for their help, their volunteerism. I will be at the school on Thursday morning with the District Health and Safety Committee. And they always want to know what's going on in the town. So this is something that I'll be putting out to them too. Encouraging music groups, theater groups, community service groups, anything for the students to get involved. I think it's important to have student involvement. So that's what I'm going to be working on, but we will get the word out there.
You want to say something about a parade? Or that is, that's an option?
We could, if, if somebody could organize a parade, absolutely. No.
Yankees, Red Sox game under the lights.
Signing of the Declaration of Independence.
You know, even if there was a mock signing, a Declaration of Independence signing with, you know, the kids could reenact that, that event. I think it would be a cool thing, so.
But that, but that baseball thing is not like a bad idea to have, like, whoever, kick shots or your.
All little uniforms.
There you go, there's your next task. Yes, Lisa.
So last time we had that event for the 200 or whatever it was.
Tricentennial? Yeah.
The Board of Selectmen actually made a motion to form that committee. So you need to decide how many members you want. And then we need to put the request out and start receiving the letters. And then they should start meeting with these groups to plan the events.
I would say seven people.
So we want to make a motion to formally form that committee.
I'll make a motion, what are they called, tricentennial?
Semi-quinsentennial. The easier way is America 250.
Semi-quinsentennial.
The easier way is America 250. You want to make?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we start the American quintcentennial committee.
Form a committee of seven?
Of seven.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we're going to put the request out there to form a committee for the semi-quinsentennial, which is in 2026. And we will start the search for a committee of seven. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion, we put Rich President on.
No, no, you.
Okay, and I, I do believe, everybody, that that is all that I have.
No, yeah.
Paula, do you have anything else?
No, but thank you for.
Well, thank you for coming in to talk with me too. Yep, no, it's, yeah, we're not ready to, that's all that I have for additions. But we have number eight, public forum. Yes.
Dave, you 59, Leah. I'm a little concerned. I, I understand the benefit of Little League for kids. I did it many decades ago when I was younger. My kids live in another town. But we have a population of 11,000, and they're citing 350 kids that's benefiting from this program. And now we want the town to pay, which means my taxes are going to go up again. And we don't have a sanitation service in town, which means Public Works will end up getting the trash. And nobody picks up my trash from my house that I don't pay for. I mean, maybe they need to look at having fundraisers and contracting one of the local trash companies to see if they'll donate a pickup for their garbage once a week or whatever and not put it on Public Works. Those guys are pretty much overworked down there anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public forum? Yes?
Yeah, Rick's down. Last time I was here, I spoke about the imposed by EverSource, but that's 40%. But in the borough here, I don't know what the rates will be. But I happen to speak to Meistrin who's on the radio. And Meistrin said the city of Norwich is 40% below the EverSource rate. So why can't Hewitt City electorate be 40% lower than the EverSource rate? Plus, EverSource wants to be up 40%. So if you take 40% and 40%, that's an 80% difference. Holy God, you know, and then revale next year, they're going to be slammed again. So the education department is going to have to give an aid somewhere. And I don't know how they're going to do it. And I know the teachers are going to try, and they got their social security, they claim they never received before, but part of the law on social security is that you don't pay in, you don't get it. And apparently, the Fairness Act said that, yeah, they will, certain people will receive social security, even if they never paid in. But I think that's.
I can't speak to that, Ransom.
They didn't have these benefits before and had to get them in kind of ways.
This is way over.
Yeah, this is, this is way beyond your municipal Board of Selectmen. So, but I mean, certainly, you know, we can have a discussion, Lori, we can have a discussion about the borough rates versus EverSource, so. All right, thank you, Ransom.
Lori.
Yes.
I have a couple of things. Yes, Ransom, the, the rates from the Jewett City community are lower than EverSource. I don't know the percentage, but they are. And the overwhelming majority of people in the borough are very happy with the election. So that's one thing. The other thing that I'd like to just mention for whomever is on the committee, and I know I'm going to get roped into it for that, for the celebration, but I know Ryan is doing fireworks this year. I think we ought to link that.
Good idea. Very good idea.
And then the third question I have is to Sharon. And that is, do you mind sharing your contact information so that if people are interested in becoming involved, they can call you? Okay, so I'll, okay, great.
I'm posted over at the post office in Irving, and I'm packing a note card.
Are you on the wanted, most wanted?
Yeah, in the back of the note card.
Okay, thank you, I'll get that for you. Okay, thanks.
Yes, public forum.
Dave, you 59, Leah. Previous to your election, you always coordinated the community cleanup.
Yeah.
Is Lisa going to be able to take over for you?
I'd like to continue. I will have both of us. She can take calls, but then I will also, because this way, what I do is I come up with the master list.
Yeah.
To generate that morning, and I meet with them up at Hopeville to say, okay, Dave, you're gonna, you know, these are the addresses you have to go to, so.
Always work.
I, I'd like to, it's something that I think since its conception, you know, I've, I've been able to do, I do enjoy it. And, but I certainly will take all hands on deck, so. Any other public forum? Yes? What's your name?
We heard the Little League's presentation. One of the things with garbage, and I just want to note that we had the same problem at the Sheldon World Rec Center. Soccer was using that, they weren't getting emptied on a regular basis. We'd go there, it was so heavy, the bags would break. Then I worked with Ryan to get residential toders instead of a dumpster. And romantic waste now is cello command. There was one at each corner of the field out there, and they were just emptying them every week instead of the dumpster. It seems to work a lot better. That may be something.
We can work on. And what is it, a toter?
A can you have for your home, that's called a toter.
Oh, okay. Just say garbage can on wheels.
I mean, that would be great, anything that would help people's lives easier.
At least it'll be weekly, that's all.
Yeah, that's the thing, it'll be weekly, and I think, as long as, I, I think those are much bigger than the cans that are there. And I think the volume will probably be okay in a week. But it's something I think we should.
It depends, because the soccer field over at Sheldon, just soccer. We have, you know, a playground there, we have a skate park there, we're right in the middle. My kids played soccer for the first time, you know, so we get a lot more foot traffic, I think. So we're emptying that thing all the time. And then after the season, we're having to go down there and empty it as well.
Okay.
And depending on what's generated by concession stand, it may still be the dumpster.
Of course. No, it's something I think we should throw out there in a discussion down the road. It might be a good solution. We could have an A for a dumpster.
And garbage cans is huge too.
Yeah, 100%. But the totes could certainly work.
Yeah.
And we may be able to talk to Cessano and see if we can get.
Couple months or something.
That's nothing through SCARA, is it? Through SCARA, any assistance through there?
We're close to the opening season.
Thank you, Tom, we appreciate that.
Excuse me. Okay, any other public forum? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Take a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.